Excellencies, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, I hereby declare open the 45th meeting of the 32nd session of the Human Rights Council. We shall now continue to take action on draft resolutions and decisions. I have been informed that the following resolutions are ready for adoption during this meeting, as shown on the screen. All the PBIs have been posted on the HRC extranet. We now move to item four. The Council will now consider draft proposal L5 Rev 1 entitled Situation of Human Rights in Eritrea. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Somalia to introduce the draft proposal.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with honor that Somalia introduces draft resolution 32 L5 Rev 1 dated July 1st on the human rights situation in Eritrea under Agenda IV. I would like, before I start the presentation, to thank all the sponsors of the draft resolution, among them Ethiopia, France, Slovenia, Canada, Croatia, Czech Republic, Luxembourg, Montenegro, Romania, Ukraine, United States. Mr. President, we welcome the increased engagement by the government of Eritrea with UN bodies such as the Human Rights Office and note its participation in the second cycle of the Universal Periodic Review and its acceptance of the 92 recommendations. We recognize that the government of Eritrea has taken steps to promote gender equality and the protection and the promotion of the economic and social rights of its people. Mr. President, we welcome with appreciation the second report delivered by the Commission of Inquiry on the human rights situation in Eritrea, which has been both transparent, impartial, and consultative in manner, in spite of the practical difficulties encouraged by the Commission while expressing disappointment that the Commission were not granted access to the country by Eritrean government. Somalia has continuously supported the Eritrean people's rights to a life free of fear and harm. We are therefore deeply disturbed by the Commission's finding of the report that there are reasonable grounds to believe that crime against humanity have been committed in Eritrea since 1991. We are also deeply concerned that during the course of the Commission's investigation that there have been no improvement to the most critical human rights violation in Eritrea since the first report, coupled with the continued deterioration of the human rights situation in Eritrea. Since one again, this one again has led to the current draft resolution be tabled with the hope to take appropriate action with regards to accountability, to fully implement the 1997 Constitution to respect international human rights and human law and to fully respect the citizens of Eritrea's expression of liberty as an inviolable right. Mr. President, we are deeply concerned that the situation of the human rights in Eritrea is a primary factor in Eritreans leaving their country. The Commission also highlighted that there have been an increase in the number of Eritreans that have sought asylum in Europe, more than doubled than in 2013, disregarding the great risks they encounter in their migration path: abduction, degrading physical and mental abuses by smugglers and human traffickers, and the danger vulnerable Eritreans, young and old, women and children, are exposed to in search of protection. Furthermore, we cannot stand idly by and allow sexual and gender-based violence to persist with impunity. Women and girls as young as five years old are subject to rape and acts of sexual violence within the border of Eritrea and beyond. These consequences have led to physical and mental suffering and pain, including post-traumatic stress, unwanted pregnancy, and transmission of sexual diseases. The Commission's inquiry highlights that this may constitute as a crime against humanity. We must do more to protect their dignity and well-being. Moreover, the Eritrean authorities continue to implement the shoot-to-kill policy at the Eritrean border targeting Eritrean leaving their country. There is no basis in the Eritrean Transitional Penal Code which justifies execution for crimes of desertion or absence without leave from the military. That's why we call upon the government of Eritrea to end and to confirm the end of such practice. We remain gravely concerned that the government of Eritrea has not made positive steps to end the indefinite national service in Eritrea. This compulsory practice, which includes young boys and girls as well as the elderly amounts to forced labor on a national scale, Eritreans are fleeing such a system which is entrenching the global refugee crisis. The continued use of arbitrary arrests and detention of persons, including incommunicated detention, is also a subject of deep concern, and we call upon the government of Eritrea to immediately release all persons illegally detained. We urge the Eritrean government to put an end to the system of national service by effectively demobilizing national service consulates after completing their mandatory 18-month service to end the practice of forced labor during and after their services. Furthermore, we call upon the government of Eritrea to implement the recommendations of the Commission's report and investigate promptly all allegations of extrajudicial killings, torture, and other cruel, inhumane, and degrading treatment of or punishment, rape, and sexual abuse within the national service, and to bring perpetrators to justice. We commend the vital role played by His Highness Sheikh Tamim bin Hamad al-Tani, the amir of the State of Qatar, which determines the release of four Djiboutian prisoners. I call on Eritrea to clarify the fate of all political prisoners, including the remaining 13 Djiboutians prisoners of war, and strongly encourage the government to respect its obligations under human rights and international human rights law and remove any barriers to their families and humanitarian organizations. Mr. President, the government of Eritrea has shown no tangible interest in ending its widespread culture of impunity. It's now the responsibility of the Council to adopt a robust accountability mechanism, one which facilitates access of justice to all Eritrean people. This resolution therefore proposes to extend the mandate of the Special Rapporteur on the Situation of Human Rights in Eritrea for a period of one year, with a revised mandate which includes the follow-up of the implementation of the recommendation of the Commission on Inquiry. Request is the General Assembly to submit the report and oral update of the Commission of Inquiry to all relevant organs of the UN for consideration and appropriate action. We envisage that the Council fulfills its duty and rises to challenge of dealing with human rights violations in Eritrea in a manner which is fair and equal. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, I would like to inform you that we conducted two informal consultations with all stakeholders and members of the Council and accepted amendments and suggestions made by many countries, and we included in our current resolution. Since we value highly the unity and the solidarity of Africa and the importance of having one text that enjoys the support of all African countries, we have attempted to take more amendments in various forms of consultations with our brothers of the African group. To our frustration, the other side has been reluctant throughout the consultation to make even slight compromises, which leads us to present situation to table this resolution. In light of this, we kindly request that all members of the Council adopt this resolution by consensus. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. You may have noticed that we are not applying speaking time limits during the voting session because we felt that we have to give all speakers enough time to present their views ahead of voting. But as you can see in the program of work today, we have a large number of proposals we have yet to act on until the finish of this meeting, and it is most likely that our work will have to continue into late evening. So I'd like to encourage all speakers to be as precise as possible. I have been informed by the secretariat that there are 11 additional co-sponsors. I now open the floor for members of the Council to make general comments. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Netherlands.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have done honor to speak on behalf of the European Union. The EU remains seriously concerned about the human rights situation in Eritrea and support this Council continue attention to the situation. The draft resolution presented by the main sponsor represents a credible response to the very serious report of the Commission of Inquiry. It ensures both the continuous monitoring of the human rights situation through the extended mandate of the Special Rapporteur and an enhanced engagement between Eritrea and international community. These have to go hand in hand in order to bring positive changes to the people in Eritrea. We thank the main sponsor for the transparent and exclusive negotiation process of this resolution, throughout which they have demonstrated a griled deal of flexibility and openness to consider all the concerns of all sides. We are particularly appreciative of the direct discussion between the main sponsor and the country concerned on this text, and in this spirit of cooperation and conscious engagement, we call on the delegation of Eritrea to withdraw its own resolution and to cooperate with the Council on the basis of the resolution, including by allowing access to the Special Rapporteur. The EU stands ready to help Eritrea implement the concrete measures to improve its human rights situation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Is there any other request for the floor? I see none. We shall now hear from the concerned country. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Eritrea.
Mr. President, excellencies. Today in this Human Rights Council, a grave injustice, yet another in a long train of injustices, is being committed against the human rights of the people of Eritrea. An unfair and unjust resolution, which Eritrea categorically rejects, is being passed precisely at a time when Eritrea is making marked progress in the political, economic, social, and cultural spheres, when its regional and international constructive engagement and cooperation is growing. It is a futile attempt, at least by some, to stop or at least slow down this progress. The unjust action that this Council is taking today and whose seeds were sown four years ago is prompted by the political agenda of the United States and a few of its European allies to ratchet up their harassment of Eritrea. But its grave consequences will not be limited to Eritrea, but will engulf the entire region. It has already stocked the tension and poured oil into a dangerously simmering conflict. This resolution will be used and abused to fund the flames of war. Furthermore, Eritrea cannot fail to remind this Council, and in particular its dominant actors, of the glaring double standards that guide its work. It's indeed ironic that Ethiopia, whose government is responsible for some of the worst human rights abuses and the brutal massacres of its peoples, Oromos and Ogadenis, Amharas and Gambellans, Afars and Tigrans, and all other nationalities, is afforded the luxury of a seat in this Council and enabled to frantically lobby for the adoption of this unwarranted resolution. Eritrea also wishes to remind this Council that its sovereign territory remains occupied in violation of international law, an occupation which constitutes a grave violation of human rights. The same is true of the unjust and unfair sanctions that have been imposed on the people of Eritrea since 2009. This eminently political action that is being taken by the Council today is a reflection of its growing politicization, of its increasing departure from its mandate. Most member states, including almost all developing countries, resent and oppose the Council being turned into a tool of political coercion, its selective, country-specific, and confrontational approach. Their views and protests are now routinely ignored, but for how long? To conclude, Eritrea will never tire from underlining that it's a nation born in the struggle for human rights, and that it will not lessen its vigorous undertakings to promote and protect the welfare and dignity of its people. In the face of continued hostility, the people of Eritrea will remain steadfast and will not be distracted from their vision and program of comprehensive nation-building and of constructive regional and international engagements and partnerships, including in the area of human rights. Eritrea also wishes to sincerely thank all the nations and individuals from all regions who have offered support and solidarity, as well as all those who have engaged with us in good faith and fairness. I thank you.
Thank you very much. I have been informed by the secretariat that there are PBIs for this draft proposal. Copies of the statement have been posted on the HRC extranet. I now open the floor for members of the Council who wish to make explanations of vote before the vote on the draft proposal. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of the Russian Federation.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Russian Federation has closely studied the draft resolution that was presented. Our delegations come to the conclusion that it contains a number of provisions which should not be looked at in the Human Rights Council. Without trying to break the consensus on this, the Russian Federation would like to disassociate itself from the resolution, and we would ask our statement to be included in the record of the meeting. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Cuba.
Thank you, Mr. President. Cuba firmly believes that international cooperation, dialogue, and respectful exchange between all countries, underpinned by respect for the principles of the UN Charter, is the surest way of meeting the objective of contributing to the achievement of the highest standards for the promotion and protection of human rights. We wish to see all resources exhausted within the context of the Human Rights Council in order to ensure that attention is focused on issues that are a concern of the international community or which may present challenges to one or several countries in terms of an enabling environment for the exercise of all human rights for the entire population. We do not believe that punitive approaches or sanctions can bring us closer to the achievement of such objectives. Cuba is of the view that the Human Rights Council should not fail to explore and promote the opening of new avenues of cooperation and dialogue with Eritrea in a context of mutual understanding, respectful exchange, confidence, and transparency, which are essential to generate a genuine international cooperation and move in an effective fashion forward in promoting and protecting all human rights for all. Consistent with this position of principle, our understanding is that operative paragraph 17 of the draft resolution L5 Rev 1, as orally revised, does not in any light imply the sending of the report by the Commission of Inquiry to the Security Council. We do not show the criteria of involving this or other UN bodies in matters that exceed the scope of their respective remits. For this reason, Cuba dissociates itself from consensus on OP 17 and requests that this be noted in the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I give the floor to the distinguished representative of China.
Mr. President, China always maintains that one needs to look at the human rights situation of a country and the challenges to face in a fair, objective, and comprehensive way, and seek to settle differences in the field of human rights through constructive dialogue and cooperation. International community should... International community should show greater understanding to the difficulties and challenges faced by a country in the promotion and protection of human rights and providing it with support. Only after full consultation with the countries concerned and with its full consent can we think about providing technical support and capacity building support. If a country's specific resolution does not enjoy the consent or cooperation of the countries concerned, it will not be helpful for dialogue and search for a solution and will do little to the promotion and protection of human rights. Therefore, my country will disassociate itself from the consensus regarding this draft resolution and would like to request that our position be recorded. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. The distinguished representative of Bolivia has the floor.
The plurinational state of Bolivia is a unitary social state of a community state that is free, independent, sovereign, democratic. And independence and freedom are values and principles, also in the UN Charter, together with fundamental freedoms. For this reason, the plurinational state of Bolivia dissociates itself from OP 17 and requests the President to ensure that this is noted in the record. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other request for the floor? I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Ecuador.
Thank you, sir. On several occasions during the visit by our foreign minister to the Council a few days or so, we clearly expressed the position of Ecuador to the effect that we're not in agreement with the securitisation of the matters under discussion in this chamber. So Ecuador also dissociates itself from paragraph 17 regarding submission of reports by this Council to the Security Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no other request for the floor. We will take note of the statements made and I'd like to ask whether there is request for a vote. I see none. May I take it then that draft proposal L5 Rev. 1, as orally revised, may be adopted without a vote? It is so decided.